All right, we're going to go ahead and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for October 24th to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 5:00. And with that, Clerk Book, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood? Councilmember Spatafor? Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Six members present. You have a quorum with the committee.
All right, that takes us to the meeting minutes from October 10th, 2022. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the meetings from October 10th, 2022.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion. We do have, I don't see anybody in the gallery that's not city staff or Board of Water and Light staff, but for the minutes, if there is anybody in the audience that would like to make public comment, we do allow public comment for up to three minutes on any of the agenda items. We do have a presentation tonight. We have a couple resolutions for discussion and action. As it pertains to, and this is for my council colleagues, as it pertains to the closed session for litigation updates, that is actually a six-vote item. Councilman Spatafor is out with regard to work. Councilwoman Wood, Vice President Wood, sorry, actually fell ill this morning, and we do not have six votes to go into closed session, so that will actually be moved, that will actually be moved to November 14th. With that being said, if there is anybody in the audience that would like to make public comment, come on up. Seeing none. All right, that takes us to our first item. This is a presentation from the Board of Water and Light, and this is the financial report for fiscal years ending 2021 and 2022. We do have, my understanding is Jason Taylor with us, as well as Heather Shawwa, who is our chief financial officer with the board.
Don't we have some other hardly recognizable gentleman in the audience, too? I can't quite place his name, but I know he's in, he looks familiar.
And of course, of course, we do, yeah, we do have our general manager, Mr. Dick Pethly, in the gallery. I did talk to him prior to, and he said he is just here to support. So with that being said, we will start with Ms. Shawwa. We're going to go and turn the floor over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, councilmembers. Thanks for having us this evening. Thank you. As you stated, we will be going over audited statements for fiscal year-end '22, which was June 30th, and then '21, the audited statements include June 30th of 2021 as well. I'm going to turn it over to Scott Taylor. He is our Director of Accounting, Finance, and Planning, and him and his team do the heavy lift for the audit and work very closely with our auditors, which is Baker Tilly. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thanks, Heather. Happy to say that we had another successful audit. We received an unmodified, also known as a clean, opinions on each of our four audited financial statements. One of the financial statements is the BWL as a whole. The other three are each of our three retirement plans. We prepared a few highlights to share with you tonight, and then we can address any questions you may have. Overall, the BWL had a good year, especially given the challenges created by COVID. We did have to deal with many of the same supply chain issues that others have faced. However, we have found ways to work through everything we've encountered so far, and we've been able to continue forward with our projects. One of the biggest impacts to our results over the last year has been the impact the economy has had on investment returns. We felt it somewhat in our operating investments, but much more so in our retirement plans. Our defined benefit plan experienced over $5 million in investment losses compared to expected gains of about $4 million, and our VIVA, which is our retirement healthcare plan, experienced over $19 million in investment losses compared with expected gains of about $17 million. So the combined impact between the two was about $45 million less in investment returns than we would have expected. We will stay the course, obviously, with our investment targets. The values are expected to come back over a period of time, but for the one-year period, the losses are required that were required to shows based on accounting standards, and they were significant for the fiscal year. Fortunately, even with the losses, though, our plans do remain fully funded. So both our defined benefit plan and our retiree healthcare plan do remain still fully funded. For BWL operations, revenues were up for the year from about $380 million the prior year to $397 million, due in large part to the additional electric generation from our new Delta Energy Park plant, which came online during the year. We were able to sell the additional generation on the wholesale market at historically high prices. The additional sales helped keep our electric rates low even when gas prices were significantly increasing. Another way we were able to keep rates low during the rapid rise in gas prices was through our hedging program. Our hedging program is essentially just our program of buying gas up to five years in advance of when it's needed in order to take advantage of lower prices and ultimately save money for our ratepayers. This program has allowed us to keep our actual cost of gas much below what the market cost of gas would have been. That concludes the prepared highlights. Are there any questions?
I'm sorry, councilcolleagues, do we have any questions for Mr. Taylor? No, none? Ms. Shawwa, did you have anything to add?
I do not.
You do not? Okay.
I do not.
I think that's all we needed. I really appreciate it. Oh, I lied. Councilman Jackson.
Mr. Taylor, how did you used to go to the Y at lunch and do a full workout and take a shower and get back in time in one hour?
I was not either.
Health is very important as staff of the BWL.
Yes. Health and wellness.
All right. So no further questions, comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. That takes us to item six. This is a resolution pertaining to Act 31, incorporation of Lansing Public Media Authority. I do believe we have Desiree Kirkland, who is our chief financial officer, as well as our city treasurer. I do believe that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's for item D. So what I'm going to actually do right now, as I understand it, is that our city attorney is going to go ahead and start a conversation pertaining to this particular act, I'm sorry, this particular resolution that deals with Act 31. And then I do believe we're going to have Greg Venker, who is one of our city attorneys, come down into the well. So Greg, if you want to join us down in the well, yep, Greg, come on up. We would greatly appreciate it if you want to come down through the double doors and take a seat right here. Thanks so much. You look surprised. Did you not know you were going to come down?
No, that's not.
Okay, fantastic. That was the boss, just by the way, that told me that that's how we were going to play this. All right.
Ready?
So Mr. Semirka, go ahead.
Well, Act, ooh, Act 31 has been around for decades. It's been used by municipalities throughout the state of Michigan. It originally was crafted, from what I was told, with the building of stadiums in Wayne County. And the concept, it's used throughout the state. We have three of them, or two of them here. We have the LEPA agreement. That's how we built the stadium, Lansing Center originally, and then the parking structure with the Lansing Building Authority. So it's not unusual to create an Act 31. It's a device provided for economic development by the state of Michigan. The concept, the standard concept is clear. The building authority builds an asset, and I'll get to the financing in a minute. And then the building authority leases that asset to the municipality or the city, and then the city makes a lease payment back to the building authority, and the building authority uses that together with other sources to pay off any bonds. That's the concept. There is always another agreement, and we have this with LEPA, where the city will actually, now that the city is a lessee of that structure, in turn contracts back to the building authority to operate. So that's exactly how it works, and that's the traditional method, and that's what we have here for a public media center. Now, I know, and so the act is very broad. It could be any types of structures. You know, it's a whole list of things that you can do with this. As I said before, we did a ballpark, we did the Lansing Center, the parking structures. So there's no restriction on it. And I know there were some issues about one draft that was made where some of the boilerplate got snuck over. That's been eliminated, and maybe Greg, you can address that.
Mr. Venker?
Sure. I can, I'm happy to speak to the drafting piece, but, and I'm happy to answer any other questions about the mechanics of an Act 31 entity. I mean, I'll be plain. I borrowed heavily from the existing articles of incorporation for LEPA when it was originally incorporated in 1994, and included in that was a section that talked about unwinding the, I think it was like the Lansing, what was it called, Visitors or Convention Center or something, which was the name of the Act 31 body that preceded LEPA. And so there was discussion of unwinding, the unwinding of that entity and the taking on of its assets and responsibilities, and that section should not have been in there. So that was taken out. There was also reference to stadium, city market, and that was removed and replaced. But otherwise, the Articles of Incorporation, and mechanically, the way that it works is articles of incorporation are submitted to council, council reviews them, and if you approve them, you say you approve them, then the city records them and publishes them in a newspaper of circulation, and then the body is created. And that's, that's sort of it. Act, Act 31 is a, I mean, it's from, the act was passed in 1948. It's got a very basic structure for setup to create the entity. There's no public hearing requirement in the statute, and the recording process, this is one of the few entities that becomes a public corporation that is not, doesn't get recorded over to LARA or to anyone. It just gets sent to the county and to the Secretary of State, and then it exists.
Very quickly, before we move on, we do have a question from Councilwoman Spitzley. We have a few questions.
Sure.
I want to call you in one thing.
Hold on one second, because I want to make sure that, I should have actually recognized Councilwoman Spitzley before we moved over to Mr. Venker. So why don't you go ahead and ask your questions, and then we'll recognize the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Greg, so why are we doing this?
That's, that's a great question that I think Dominic Cockran can probably answer better than me, but I can, I mean.
Let me stop you real quick.
Sure.
Why don't you come on down? We're going to have to have you down here soon, anyway. Thank you.
Dominic Cower, yeah.
Good evening.
Sure. So if you need the question repeated, Councilwoman Spitzley simply asked why we are doing this.
Certainly. So, well, just, I mean, a little bit of background. I'm sure people have heard of the Ovation Project, which will be a new Lansing Public Media.
Can I stop you just for a second? Can you pull that mic up just a little bit closer? Thank you so much.
So this is the first step to get the Ovation Concert Venue and new Lansing Public Media Center up and running. This is kind of, I'm sure a lot of you remember the Civic Center, which was a robust concert venue that we had downtown. The plan, always from the beginning, when the Civic Center was decommissioned, was a two-part replacement. So the Lansing Center was actually only supposed to be the first part replacement of the Civic Center to capture the event and convention business that was happening at the Civic Center. And then the plan was always to build the Performing Arts Center or Concert Venue that was actually supposed to be, it was originally under the Hollister administration, going to be where the Stadium District Apartments are. So this has been a project, I have a feasibility study from the year 2000 in my office, and it takes up two banker's boxes, and I refer to it frequently. So it was a very useful study that was done back then. Of course, we've updated it and done a new study, but it's still a lot of valid information. So this would be the organization that would oversee the construction of that facility and then transform into an ongoing management board as well.
I have another question, Mr. President.
So the governing board of this Act 31 organization would be the governing board for that facility.
And if I can, just very quickly, before we recognize Councilwoman Spitzley, so there was a feasibility study that was referenced in our pack.
That's my question.
And it discussed as an example the fact that City of Lansing residents, at I think an 87% rate, supported some type of venue like this. So that feasibility, are we talking about the same feasibility study? So this is from back in 2007?
No, 2000.
Back in 2000.
But that's, that's not the one I believe your packet refers to. There's an updated one. I was just, only referred to that just to illustrate how long this project has kind of been in the works.
Okay, so let me set around that note. So with regards to the feasibility study, when was it conducted, the most recent? Who was it conducted by, and how did we engage residents?
So it was AMS Planning and Research. There are many firms who do this kind of work across the country. They were selected because they have a really conservative reputation of not just telling people what they want to hear. You know, sometimes that's a problem with feasibility studies, that the firms that conduct them will just kind of give you like the answer that they think that the client wants to hear. We actually asked them a very different question. We talked about building something that could house like the Lansing Symphony Orchestra on a permanent basis, like a concert hall with amazing acoustics. Turns out to build something like that is more like $60 million, and it just wasn't financially feasible to build something like that in Lansing. What we learned from the, from that group was, they said, if you have that kind of philanthropic dollars and you can build that kind of amazing facility, you should, but if you just build this flat-floor concert venue that your market really needs, that you have a major university, you're a capital city, and you just don't have this kind of like venue for shows, if you build that facility, which can be done much cheaper, you know, under $20 million instead of $60 million, you're going to capture like 80% of the economic impact of that $60 million project. So at some point, it just became a pretty obvious decision that, you know, let's build this facility that's right-sized for our community, that is more what we need. And there was a lot of, sorry, you asked when that occurred. That study was in 2019, and then they did an update after the pandemic to make sure that that still, demand still existed, and in fact, it had increased. So.
Because it referenced the 87%, what was the medium used to, or mediums, I should say, to actually engage in outreach?
So they conducted extensive engagement with polling and lots of the potential users, like concert promoters and nonprofit organizations, like the Lansing Symphony Orchestra, and many others. I can share a copy of that study and the update, which is actually more relevant. I can email it to this group. It's really good information.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. You took my question. But, okay. So following up on his, so when did council get a copy of this feasibility study before today? This updated feasibility study, so that we would be prepared to, you know, look at this and make a thoughtful discussion and decision on it?
Well, if you haven't received it before today, I'm happy to send it right away.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I think that that would be an appropriate thing for council to have to make a decision. So the Lansing Convention and Visitors Bureau, where is that going? Is that part of this?
No.
No, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
So the Lansing Public Media Authority, is that under LEPA?
No.
It's not, so it is a separate authority. Are we going to be providing, are we going to be subsidizing this authority like we do LEPA?
No. We, when we conducted a fundraising feasibility, in terms of the appetite for donors to assist in building this and invest alongside the city to build this kind of facility, we learned that there was no appetite for building something that would have an ongoing subsidy from the city. So this has a pro forma operating budget that actually operates in the black and is profitable.
Have we, have we seen that pro forma?
It's part of the, yeah, I'll send all that information.
It's part of the feasibility study. Okay. So.
But so no, the short answer is no, it will not be a subsidized operation.
Okay. And so, but we have to, we have to approve the Articles of Incorporation. Why? So what's the connection? If it's going to be separate and we're not subsidizing it, why is council approve, yeah, whoever?
I can answer that. Because under Act 31 of the first extra session of 1948, the governing body of the incorporating unit is the only entity that can create this body.
Excuse me. I knew that. I just, I always ask questions that I think other people in the public is asking. You know, and I think I'm done. I'm really concerned about, are we going to be voting on this this evening, or is this going to lay over for a little bit? What's the process here?
So, so yes, it is on the agenda. That does not necessarily mean we're going to make it that far.
Yeah. I will not be supporting this, President.
It sounds, it sounds like, and we certainly haven't heard from other council members, but it sounds like you would like some time to take a look at the feasibility study in addition to other documents that we probably should have had. So we certainly have mechanisms in place to not look at this tonight.
I, you know, I will, I will, you know, the will of the council is the will of the council. I'm just saying for myself, I don't have enough information to make an informed decision, and I will not be supporting this.
Do we have other questions or comments? Mr. Jackson?
So just to be clear, because I'm a little confused, the authority is to be set up so that we can build or improve a building, one that doesn't exist yet?
That's correct. Nothing exists yet. The Act 31 body is basically a preliminary step so that financing models become available, so that if there is funding sufficient to build the thing, then we have an entity in place to actually oversee that construction, and it affords, frankly, much more flexible funding models in terms of receiving donations, more easily spending money within the confines of its charter, and then it has certain bonding authority, and it also can contract with the city so that if funds are received, for example, I know that there's a resolution for the council to receive a large chunk of money from the state specifically for this purpose. If the, you know, that would be city money, but the city can appropriate that or, you know, deem it to go to that body so that you can get everything in one place to actually build and oversee the construction of this. I mean, the building authorities are really geared towards, they have limited but broad power towards building structures.
Okay. And the building, do we get to know anything about the proposed or potential building or location or anything? Is it just one single facility, or is it like all encompassing of anything that the Lansing media, public media, has to do with Lansing Public Media?
Yes, and I mean, Dominic can speak to that stuff better than I can.
Yeah. So what we're proposing is actually a combination adaptive reuse and new construction. If you can picture in your minds the 500 block of South Washington, Lenawee in Washington is basically, that block on Washington is empty, other than a single brick building that I believe used to be the Lansing Credit Exchange. So the, the plan is to redevelop that building and rehab it into a new Lansing Public Media Center, and also would be space available for community use. There's other nonprofits that are interested, that haven't committed yet, like all of the Above Hip Hop Academy and Lansing Art Gallery are possibilities, who might be interested in having space there. That would be redeveloped and then building north from that new construction for the venue. So it's kind of a hybrid project of new construction and adaptive reuse. So it would be all of those things.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions, but I do appreciate the Lansing Media Center now, because a lot of nonprofits and smaller, you know, radio and shows, they do their thing there. So I can imagine a new facility might, you know, make it easier and expand and that, too. So I think that's a benefit potentially.
Yeah. We think it's exciting, because if you imagine like the kids that come to our media center to learn how to produce TV and video, if they're, and record music and all the stuff that they do, imagine doing that in a facility where like later that evening a world-class artist is coming. It kind of, it makes, it builds up the excitement level for the members, you know, kind of makes you want to step up your game, too, you know? So it's going to be exciting.
So just very quickly, I was sidebarring with city attorney, my office manager. I don't know if you talked about this piece, and this is actually just about the development itself. There was quite a bit of media that came out in February of this year about what this could potentially be. And I talked about, you know, nearly a 2,000-seat venue, and you'd have the, you know, room for the private party that oversaw the, the actual venue, you know, with some balcony built in, and that there would be, you know, space for community groups. There was also discussion about 40, I thought, lost for artists. Is that still part of the plan, or did I read that wrong?
It's, no, you did, you saw that, right? That was the original thought, and knowing what we heard from donors, that they were not interested in building something that was going to be a financial drain on the city, that would be a net positive and standalone financially. Incorporating housing into the development was a way to, like, almost easily do that. I mean, because the net operating income from some housing could help trickle to the bottom line of this cultural facility and put it in a pretty strong financial position. It also made the project extremely complex from a design perspective of putting housing on top of a music venue. You know, pretty tricky. It'd have to be people that are okay with living on top of a music venue. It complicated the financing and then the project as a whole. So giving up that housing, what we get in return, so this is something I've been learning in this process, anything over four stories, you guys probably already know this, anything over four stories in Michigan is actually considered a high-rise. So we, with that older project, we would not be able to have any kind of rooftop component, like a rooftop venue or restaurant or bar, because once you put people above that, even if it's outdoors, that's considered a fifth floor. And once it becomes a high-rise, it gets a lot more expensive, a lot more complicated. So what we get back by giving up the housing is a really awesome rooftop component that will take over the whole rooftop restaurant, bar, gathering space type place, that, the income from which is what helps make this financially feasible. So it's less income than 40 apartments would have been, but enough to make it profitable, if that makes sense.
Just so there's clarity in this, this is not part of the city. This is a separate authority. If I could give you some examples, Tax Increment Finance Authority is separate, EDC is separate, Ex-Michigan Development Corporation, Brownfield Authority, you're all familiar with those authorities. That's what this is. And it can receive funds from any source. Could be funds from donations, can be funds from contracts for services. It's just, it's wide open. And the whole idea here, if I were to say one thing, it allows for the operation of this project as a business. And that's what this is all about, a business that is separate from the city without any obligation on the part of the city, except what might be in the lease agreement.
Separate some liability as well, right?
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Do we have other questions, comments? All right. Mr. Garza?
All right, thank you, Council President. Thanks for being here today. I really appreciate you guys presenting to this, to us, and I'm looking forward to seeing your planning and research feasibility study. But is there any particular reason why this didn't get housed under LEPA?
So we consider this project to be, it's going to be a really heavy lift for the board that does get incorporated for this new organization. So to foist that additional work on, you know, onto a LEPA board and say, oh, by the way, here's a new facility that's going to take, it's going to be a lot of hands-on work from this governing board, not only through construction, but also to turn this into a successful endeavor. It's going to take focus. It's going to take people who are passionate about this specific project. So the thought was, we had so many people from the, you know, entertainment, music, and arts community that are really excited about this project, that are kind of clamoring to be a part of the board, that it just, it made sense to stand on its own. It's going to be a lot to operate, you know, so it's going to need a dedicated governing body, we think.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It makes, makes a lot of sense. Has there been any kind of pushback from like the Wharton Center regarding this project?
So I met many times with Mike Brand, the former executive director, and my new friend, Eric Olmshai, the new executive director. We've already met a couple times. He attended the Creative Placemaking Summit that the Arts Council put on a couple weeks ago. We had a listening session for there, just to hear people's ideas. He was a part of that and attended that. He sees this absolutely as a compliment to the Wharton Center. This is something that like, they get calls all the time from shows that they're like, it doesn't make sense to have this at the Wharton Center. We're like a seated, formal, you know, kind of venue. It's not really appropriate for like a concert, you know, like a rock concert or something. So, so they actually anticipate referring business to this new endeavor, and totally complimentary and not competitive, for sure.
All right. Well, thank you. I've got two additional questions we have. First, Councilman Jackson? We have first, Councilman Jackson, and then we have Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought of another question. So, I love my city, of course, but a lot of times, it's hard for businesses to make profit, as good as ideas are. And there's been a lot of great ideas in the past. So, what would happen if, worst-case scenario, and again, I'd love to support this, but this question might help, if for some reason, people don't do the rooftop as much, the nonprofits don't have the money, and it's not really as profitable as you thought, what would happen?
So, at every juncture and laying out this pro forma that you'll all see, we made the conservative choice, right? In terms of like revenue, expected revenue, expected attendance, the, I'm going to pull it out of my hat right now, but I think like the break-even for events is around one per week on average. So there's going to be times of the year when there's multiple per week, and maybe on the heat of summer, it might only be one per week, in the big venue part. So, the break-even is very conservative, the staffing numbers, the expenses are very conservative. So, the net operating result of the kind of $70,000 to $80,000 of annual profit is already kind of a worst-case scenario. And of course, we're planning on going into this, other than the bonding that the city will do for the PEG fees, which has its own repayment mechanism that's separate, because that comes from the cable companies and MetroNet, there were, this will be built with no debt. So, that payment structure is already coming in through the PEG fees to pay the bonds back, but other than that, there won't be any debt, ongoing debt obligation for this. So, it's pretty conservative. Like, there's no bank note that will have to get met every month, you know?
And I don't want to weigh too much into that, that piece, only because that is our next item, but Councilwoman Spitzley, go ahead.
The bonding is our next issue, discuss that. Okay, I won't ask my question on that then. How does this, because we just approved like a concert venue in a space on Washington?
Yeah.
And so you're talking about a concert venue as well. So, I'm curious as to, you know, those two?
Yeah.
And how those two may conflict with each other?
Sure. That's a great question, and we're not working in silos separately from those folks. We've also had many conversations with them. The size of their venue is, so you'll see in the AMS research, they told us, you need this 2,000-person venue, and you also need like a 500-person venue in your market, that you don't have those things in your, this semi-major market for Michigan, you know, we're the capital city and we have a Big Ten University. So, when we engaged with those folks and told them about this plan, they're thrilled because they were like, that was going to be our next step, you know, to, we would be looking to build that size venue in Lansing. So, you know, it's not going to be me booking the concerts at this place. It's not my expertise. We'll be contracting with concert operators and promoters. We'll probably put out an RFP for an organization to manage the overall calendar, but it would still be open to independent promoters and other people who want to have shows, but they would kind of oversee the calendar. I imagine that they would be the first people to respond to that, because they could ensure that there's complimentary things happening and not two of the same kinds of concerts on the same night, and it would be something that would be greater than the sum of its parts, instead of competing. So, the level of artists and shows that would be coming through are completely different between a 500-person venue and a 2,000-person venue, and not conflicting at all.
I appreciate that.
So.
You know, I, I think that the ovation and the idea of the ovation is amazing, and I think we need an arts type of thing here in downtown Lansing. But I've been very consistent in my term, in my tenure here on council, about approving stuff that I see at the last minute. And it's hard for me to support this when I haven't seen the feasibility study, I haven't seen the budget, and nobody from the administration has even picked up the phone to say, hey, this is what's coming. And it's not your fault, Dominic. It is, to me, just a continued symptom that we're not working together.
Okay.
And that's unfortunate. So, I, I will not be supporting this. As a matter of fact, and whether it's voted up or down, that's it, I move to table this until we get the feasibility study and the budget and more information, so that we can make an informed decision. I understand that we're not paying any money for this, but we are, through council and through resolutions, approving this. And I can't in good conscience approve something, I have no clue what's going on, and I have no clue what the feasibility is. And so, I move to table this until we get that information.
All right. So just to be clear, there is a motion on the floor that pertains to resolution in Act 31, the incorporation of Lansing Public Media Authority, and the motion is to table. Is there further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. So what we're going to do now, we're still going to move on to the next discussion. And so we are actually going to replace Greg with Shelby Freyer, who is our chief strategy officer. Mr. Jackson is going to, thank you so much, so kind as to actually bring another chair down into the well, so that we can keep Dominic, but also bring down Desiree Kirkland. Oh, she's not coming. I thought you were coming. You might as well. Why not? Come on down. And then we'll also have our chief financial officer and city treasurer, Desiree Kirkland. All right. So I don't know who wants to begin, and we started kind of already having a little bit of this discussion, right, with the last discussion. In any event, what we have before us, the resolution that deals with the issuance and sale of limited tax general obligation bonds for capital improvements for Ovation Performing Arts Center. So I would assume we're going to start with Ms. Kirkland.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So, you did get a little bit of information, so we are asking for approval to have a capital improvement bond for the Ovation Performing Arts Center of $20 million, which will be covered or paid through the PEG fees that we currently give in, get in from our T-Mobile and a couple of the other.
The cable company.
Cable company, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, that's what we're asking right now, which will cover some of the costs for the development of the project.
All right. Fantastic. Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we table this as well. I think there are still questions. You know, I'd like to know how much are the PEG fees, how long the bond, blah, 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 blah. We don't have that information. We don't have the information on the feasibility study. We don't have the information on the budget. To me, there's just not enough information presented to council to move forward on this.
Sure, and I think that's fair. So there is a motion on the floor to table, and again, this is a discussion action, item 6D. Councilman Jackson.
Is there a discussion on the motion to table?
Sure.
I think we might have a small presentation from some people who might know a little bit, and if it's like five or 10 minutes, I don't know. I mean, we might get some info, and then we could still table it.
Sure.
I'm still good with that.
No, frankly, I did too. So if there, if there is additional information.
I don't know. I really don't know.
We certainly can entertain that at this time, or, because we'll have complete materials for our November 14th meeting, we could bring all of you fine people back down, and we could have a more robust and complete conversation at that time. Mr. Jackson, are you, are you comfortable with maybe bringing them back on the 14th, or would you like it now and then? Okay. Let's plan on that.
Okay, we can do that.
Is there further discussion? All right. So there is a motion on the floor to table. All those in favor. Oh, you do have.
No, no, I'm fine. I was just going to say, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. I appreciate it. We look forward to the additional materials, okay? All right. That takes us to, again, due to not having six votes for a six-vote item to go into closed session, that takes us to others. Is there any other business before the body? Councilwoman Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand we don't have the votes for closed session, and I'm not going to go into that. My only question is, by not going into closed session today, city attorney, are we missing any deadlines or dates or, you know, because you know, I love to give you my opinion, I just don't want to miss it, so.
Mr. Smirka.
No, we're not missing any deadlines. And you know, we're trying to keep council informed on all these major cases. You know, you should have gotten an email today that we filed with the Michigan Supreme Court in the annexation case, and so we're bypassing the Court of Appeals. So, that's the latest, but no, we're not missing anything.
Yeah. And I appreciate the clarification. I think sometimes people don't understand, obviously, we can't talk about what is disclosed in those meetings. But that being said, I think some people miss the fact that they really are informational in nature. So with that, Councilman Jackson.
Thanks. And you know, I'm the one that always votes no, so I just want to put it on the record, just some reasons why. So, I learned from, and I'm not going to, but being in the closed meetings, we talk about all these different like union contracts and all these different retirement things that we can't talk about, and we, I'm not even in those meetings. And those meetings, what's, what happens affects the bottom line in the city for years to come. Some can argue, you know, years past, how it is. So without being in those meetings, and it being so important, I get to vote, do we want to do it in a closed session? I don't like closed sessions. I like to have, you know, I feel like I'm a public person. So, now with the litigation, which is all that is today, you know, we could, well, if you guys all was like, please, Brian, give me.
With the, with the, with the understanding, one, that there are no deadlines to be missed, because again, this is simply informational. And then with the understanding that we would not have the votes tonight, we actually sent home attorneys that were, yeah, prepped to present. So with that being said, is there any other business before the body? And seeing none, we are adjourned at 5:42.